...to the planning board here in February 21st, 2018. In compliance with the open meeting laws for the state of Massachusetts, we are being video and audio taped. We have, first on the agenda, a request for withdrawal from Six Shire Drive.
Sherwood.
Sherwood Drive, I'm sorry, without prejudice. Have a motion for that.
I move to accept the withdrawal without prejudice for the Six Sherwood Drive site plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
7:05, which is time. We have a request for continuance for 194 Main Street. Could somebody make a motion to continue that to our next meeting, which is March 28th? What time is open?
It's 28th, really? Is it the 28th?
Yeah, if that works for everybody.
Right here, what time? What time is open on March 28th, 7?
We can do 7 or, yeah, 7 o'clock.
All right, so we'll have the continuous pushed to 7 on the 20th of March.
Motion for continuance for 194 Main Street for March 28th at 7 o'clock.
Second.
Second half.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, since it's not 7:10 yet, which is another continuance, why don't we go over the review draft decision for 1618? Sharon, has everybody read that that was sent out to us?
Yep.
Anybody have any comments or modifications to that?
I've given mine to Rich.
So we have incorporated your comments, so we forward it to the applicant, so the engineer and the applicant themselves, so they've reviewed it as well.
Is the stormwater permit on a separate?
Yeah, it's separate.
I don't see it here.
Should be right behind it.
Should be right.
Is it attached?
It's not. I don't think it's attached, but it's right behind it.
Can I have it?
Yeah, right behind. That condition's...
It starts with conditions of approval.
Site plan.
I do have it.
Special permit.
So first, we can approve the, Walter, this motion for the site plan approval for 1618 Sharon Ave.
Hang on just a second, I'll lay my hands out here. This guy here, right?
Yep.
All right, I move to approve the site plan application, decision number 2017-10 for 1618 Sharon Ave.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a condition of approval for the stormwater management permit for 1618 Sharon Ave.
Gotta find it again.
Approve that?
You want to roll, Walter?
You go.
Okay, I move to approve the condition of approval 1618 Sharon Ave stormwater management permit, and it should be dated February 21st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While it is time, why don't we, we have a 7:10 public hearing continuance for Cranbury Heights subdivision, which requested another continuance. So if we can move them to maybe 7:05 on the 28th?
I move to continue the public hearing for the Cranbury Heights Open Space Preservation Special Permit to March 28th at 7:05 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to go over, in your report with us, Rich? What's involved?
She laughs. Why you laughing?
In this particular, huh?
Because I wrote it.
That's why I chuckled. Town report with us?
Yeah, it's already safe for one.
I did a great job, no?
You didn't. Nice job, nice job.
Why don't you, why don't we go back to you, Rich, then, and...
Okay. Do you want to go over the...
Over the planner's report?
Okay. Yeah, what, how much time do we have? 15 minutes? All right. So probably the first one, Mr. Chairman, maybe tackle, if you want, the amendments to the affordable housing bylaw?
Sure.
Would that work?
Yep.
All right. The copies that you have before you have highlighted in bold italics, and the few recommendation changes to, one, is to actually have trigger point when somebody needs to apply for the special permit for affordable housing. The way the bylaw is structured now, it tells you the size of a development that requires a special permit, when, to provide affordable units. It doesn't tell you when, so...
So there's no data on when they have to apply for the special permit right now?
Some suggestions that we have, we have a provision to place the bylaw, it kind of links them a little bit better together, not really linked well right now. Thought being that it would be, as I recommended, to do it after the appeal period expired, with no appeals, and then no later than 90 days subsequent to that, with no appeals taken, so that we can, ideally going forward, I probably would like to have applicants consider do it simultaneously, but, you know, they have the option to do that. That's one proposed change. The other one, the next change, was a recommendation, Housing Production Plan, that was completed last fall, was to allow for a cash option, as far as affordable, as opposed to a unit onsite or offsite. And the, essentially there, I've taken that language, which was recommended from the consultant, which mirrors other languages from affordable housing bylaws for how to go about calculating the amount of money. But what I did, in addition to that, in the same section, I added another provision where you could have options. So, for example, let's say it's a larger scale development, you wanted to have some affordable units, actually created with the development, but also be interested that there might be a case where the housing trust would like to have money to be able to do some additional affordable housing. You could mix and match. To answer your question, the email, I think, really the value on rental is really negligible, because you're essentially on a rental project, you're just reducing the rental amount. So say, for example, if it's market rate at $1,800 a month, you would just reduce it down to, say, 13, 1,200. So the incremental difference really isn't...
Well, yes, if you base it on the rent, I agree, but if you're basing it on the value of the property, I don't see why it doesn't apply.
Yeah, you mean if it was a mixed, you talking about mixed use case, or?
Whether, whether...
Whatever the case may be.
It's all rentals, doesn't matter. I mean, the value of the property is still, whatever it is, 400,000, whatever per unit.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, that's something I can, let me do a little more homework and report back to you about that.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
The parameters on the cash amount are really tough. If you've got two subdivisions, that each have to require one affordable, and one is building houses for 15 to 1,800 square feet, and one is building houses for 35 to 4,000 square feet, and assuming that all the affordables have to be on a similar size and look, the person with the 1,500 square foot development is spending much less money to put that one affordable in, as compared to the person with the 3,500 square feet. So I think that we should have some language in there, just, it's going to be hard to quantify this, this number, no matter which way you go, you know?
Why, why are we considering a cash option, anyway?
I think it was brought by the, was that a new bylaw that was passed?
It was a recommendation in the Housing Production Plan. So, for example, the, you know, we have the Community Preservation Act here, which they have money set aside for affordable. There may be an instance where you want to produce some affordable housing in the town itself, and then have it available to, say, for example, for seniors, and you want to be able to infuse some money to actually build housing for people in town, specifically. That may not be... So, for example, you have a subdivision that's a market rate, it's not age restricted, but you have a housing need to maybe produce some senior housing. It would give you the opportunity to get the money to be able to do that.
But the town would be taking on the responsibility of...
Of creating.
Creating that development.
Well, the town, and the town has done, has done that in the past.
But why, why take a requirement of the developer to do the same thing and put it on the town?
The town may wish to do that, that's the point.
The town has funds, the town has the community preservation fund.
That's right.
It's an hour, it's our decision whether they can have available the cash option.
Oh, so the board is keeping control over whether they can or not?
They just can't get that. And before, it was an agreed on price, but now we're trying to quantify that, and they also have, the board has the authority, if they want to build one offsite, whether they can do that, and just what, and where the place could be. I think they're trying to get around that same concept. If you have to sell an affordable house for 180,000, and you're building a neighborhood of 4,000-foot homes, it really is going to be sort of out of place to put something in there and sell it for that much money, you know? So they're just trying to make it equitable to cover different size, different size projects. But all of these things, am I correct? It's the authority of the planning board, whether they get the cash option, or whether they can build it up. So we have control. And normally, we had a discussion a while ago, we take the input from the Affordable Housing Committee, the trust, on what they need at the particular time, what they're looking for, you know? Because right now, really, with the scarcity of land around, if they got money, they may have a hard time finding a lot, so...
Plus, it would give us some added flexibility. If we wanted to do something a little bit larger scale, we'd be able to plan for that, and be able to contribute to that.
We could actually take the money from a bigger project with bigger houses, take that fund and build a duplex someplace, on an affordable lot, and get two units, so...
I agree with Aaron's concern that the town really isn't in the business of development, and so dabbing our toe every now and then, where we're not, it's not our expertise, but I guess it just gives us ultimate flexibility.
And they have done this a bunch of times.
I think I'm less concerned if we...
Oh, I never said that, by far, right, yeah.
I was under the assumption that the developer had the choice. It sounds like we, we still get to lead the conversation, which I guess gives us flexibility, not them.
Yeah.
Exactly.
If we wish to exercise that.
I mean, I think it's important to, you know, give yourselves, cells being the towns, the credit. You are producing affordable housing units. Through the trust, though, I mean, there are a lot of towns that aren't doing that, so you should be happy that it is. I mean, yes, they're probably not experts in building housing, but they are, they've added, I believe it's like 19 units through the trust, so... So it's, that's commendable, because, you know, so the town's doing that as of yet. There's a lot of towns that would like to have, for example, affordable housing trust, and money going into it to produce that housing, and they're not able to do that.
And they're not getting as much money now from the Community Preservation Fund as they used to, so there's a difference in funding year to year, so I think that's why...
Like you said, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's to the board, it's not the applicant, it just gives you an option.
Because wasn't this initiated by the Municipal Housing Trust, this change to the bylaw?
Yeah, in the Housing Production Plan.
It's also in the Housing Production Plan.
It was one suggestion, recommendation to give consideration to, so, to be able to, as well, provide variety of housing types as well. So that, again, it may make sense, it may not, but, you know, you'll kind of make that determination when the project comes forward. One more ministerial thing, as I put in there some language, I saw another one, is just to make sure that it's recognized, they have to have regulatory agreements, the units are affordable, whereby they would count towards the subsized housing inventory.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity. And the last one, probably I've learned a little bit more, is the, the timing of the affordable. So the canvassing the different, in the, so what we have presently in the bylaw is, one of the things that was recommended from the Smart Growth Alliance, they have a model bylaw that towns work from, and I did canvass some of the other communities that are within our area. And some do follow that same schedule, but some don't actually have that schedule. The idea of the schedule I proposed in there was just to have, so when somebody comes in, they have a better idea of when they need to provide the affordables.
Yep.
And hopefully, it makes your job a little bit easier, as opposed to having to go back and forth, so something's a little prescriptive right there out front. And the way it kind of structured is that, you know, when you get to that next grouping of 10, you've got to have that affordable. So, for example, with 10 and 19, you get one, get to 20, we have to get that one into 19, so when we get to 20, we already have that unit in place. So that's something that...
And all the way up the schedule.
And all the way up the scale, scales all the way up, so, because it gets, in the model bylaw, they really based it on a large scale development, so it's a completely different scale, size development, when they use those numbers, so it doesn't quite, it's a little bit more challenging on a smaller scale, so I think this hopefully levels the playing field a little bit.
All right, so we'll, we'll speak about this again when we have the public hearing for the new zoning bylaws, correct?
Yeah, so for tonight, it's just to...
Let us know.
Well, hopefully blessed to move it on to the next stage, which would be to submit it to the warrant, you know, to the board of selectmen for inclusion on the warrant for May, and then it has to come back to you again for a public hearing.
When's the warrant close?
It closes Monday.
Okay. Monday.
Yeah. Again, these are, you know, these are recommendations, I think they make good sense, you know, if you get to the, the point where the hearing, you don't, something's missed, we don't, you know, we won't tweak it, but at least roll it forward, I think, is a good idea.
I mean, the warrant would put the article on the, on the warrant, and if we chose to wordsmith it or something, you can still do that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I think it makes it more clear.
Under your H3C Special Permit section, you reference, or within 90, 90 what?
Right here. Say 90 days.
Yeah, 90 days. See?
90 years.
Well, it won't be around 90 years, it'd be nice to think.
All right, we don't need a formal vote, do we? I don't think so. I guess we can vote to move it to the warrant.
Yeah, to move it to the warrant, yeah, that, that's, that's all I'm looking for.
Motion now, Walter, unless anybody has anything to say?
All right. These are bylaws, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I move to forward the amendments to the Affordable Housing Development Section of the Norfolk bylaws to the selectmen for inclusion in the warrant for the May Town meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next time for one more, Rich? You want to talk about the complete streets, or?
Yeah, five minutes, right? All right. So we are, as I mentioned, I think briefly, the last meeting submitted, so Ray actually had started this process before I had gotten here to bring the, this is kind of the book I certainly handed out to you, a Complete Streets, just an overview is, again, when you look at transportation, look at all sectors now, basically walking, biking, vehicular traffic, and, and mass transit. Complete Streets is a program that's been adopted by the Mass DOT to, when you look at, and this is new projects, or in most cases, really existing infrastructure that you're going to be making changes to, to give consideration to everybody, if that's what's most practicable. So if you can have better bicycle accommodations, you want to try to do that if you can, certainly pedestrian accommodations and so on. But it does take into account the existing conditions, which, you know, may be where the project is. So it's a process, we submitted to be included, we, we've gotten, the board of selectmen submitted a letter of commitment to continue on. The next step is to, to prepare a prioritization plan. There's technical assistance grant money available to the town, which basically puts a list of different priority projects, which are sidewalks, could be intersection improvements, safety improvements. And once it becomes incorporated into a prioritization plan, there is a pot of money, obviously, it's kind of follow the money, but money to fund some of these different projects. So it may be a sidewalk, could be intersection improvement, it could even be some advanced signage. In some cases, we have crosswalks, there may be a need to change the crosswalk signage, which is more actuated, so make drivers more aware. That's something that could be funded. So we're going to, I'll be continuing on with that process. There will be, and there's a guidebook here, how do we follow that process, but I'm going to be...
Richard, in, in that program, are there requirements on the town, or are these suggestions as to how to do the job better?
It's really suggestions how to do the job better, and, and these are, and these are now practices, which all engineers have followed along, yeah.
Would we get any assistance from that bonds if we addressed and changed some of the dangerous intersections in town?
Say again?
Some of the intersections in town that are considered a danger because of their setup, or in sight distance. If we wanted to fix some of those intersections, would some of this bond money be able to be used for things like that?
It, the short answer is yes, but it will probably depend on the order magnitude. So there's, there's $400,000 there, so you got to bear in mind, it's, you know, it's scaled, but it depends what they are.
At least it would be in the general area then.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, again, these kind of things do help if the towns look and do other projects down the road, which is, you know, maybe a larger project to put on the, like 115, when they did the work there. There might be things the town would like to get funded as well, so it helps. So I'm just, I'll be back to you, but just give you an update of where we are right now.
Okay.
So there's no catch to it. I mean, if this is the way industry standard... There's no catch to it, I mean, if this is the way industry standard engineer practice, practice goes, and we're doing it kind of anyway, but this just allows us funding, potential funding streams, there's no catch, though?
Not a catch, no, I, I will say.
What's the catch?
What's the catch? Well, the catch is, the catch is more of a kind of a more philosophical catch in a way, like, I think for a long period of time, traffic engineers would design roads to be wide, and, you know, over time, they've kind of come back, so to speak, to realize the why of the road, you know, you, you build a wide road, and you, and you put a speed limit on at thirty miles an hour. Well, you know, now the driver has to self-regulate the speed, so this idea is to try to, again, design roads that they're safe, but not to encourage speeding, so for example, you know, you might want to have a wider shoulder, which could be available for people walking or biking, or gives you a little more line of sight when you pull out somewhere, but then it narrows the travel in itself, so it kind of close, you know, feel you got to stay within boundaries, so those are one of the things that.
I think Norfolk has actually been working sort of in that vein for about twenty years, because the planning board's regulations for subdivision roadway is twenty-six feet.
Right.
I don't think in twenty years, we've had a twenty-six foot wide road. I think, yeah, well, right, so most of them are at least twenty-four feet, and, and the secondary ones are more like twenty-two for that same road.
Well, that's the thing, so I think. Right, so here it's kindly preached to the choir, so to speak, I mean, I think it's, to a degree.
Yeah, but we certainly could use improvement on the, on the pedestrian and bicycle and, you know, other modes of transportation.
Yeah, yep, yep, no, that's, that's definitely the next.
Are there any guidelines that are particular to scenic byways, which all of our roads are, that that might tailor what a suggestion would be, considering that it could be heavily tree-lined like ours?
Right, so that's why, kind of that next step, getting somebody to help us with this, they really need to have that kind of prior experience, because it's not.
It's not apples to apples.
No, 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 it's not, so that's why, you know, I have to see who has some good experience in that area, I, I totally agree, as I'm, you know, driving around, trying to visualize how we could do things, it's definitely a little bit.
Yeah, you have to be sensitive or creative.
Yeah, absolutely, right, right, creative sense of, but you kind of already do it in a way, like, for example, you know, we have a project tonight that's before the board, you know, the, the applicant went to the abutter, who said, hey, you know what, we'll grant an easement to be able to man the sidewalk around the tree. That, that's creative, you know, some towns wouldn't do that, so that's a hat off to the town and the developer in this case, so, yeah, I, point taken, for sure, so.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
All right, we are now in time for our next public hearing.
Just a segue, huh?
Norway Farms.
Good evening, Rick Goodrow with United Consultants, here tonight on behalf of Rob and Gene Kane, the owners of the property, also their attorney, Elizabeth Maitland. We're here tonight with the last couple of items that were discussed at the previous meeting to, to hopefully get resolved this evening. One of the items that was requested was the addition of the Affordable Housing Lot Label, which was added to Lot Six and provided to the board, which I do have copies of if the board would like to see them in eleven by seventeens.
Just, just point to Lot Six.
Lot Six, this actually, this is the subdivision set, there was actually a one-page plan.
That's okay.
I have eleven by seventeens, all right, so it's Lot Six here, located on the end of the cul-de-sac to the right, where the lot has been designated. Second item that was asked by the board was some input from the, or discussion with the health agent with respect to the road salts and the water quality swale located to the west of the roadway. I did have a discussion with Wade about that, I don't know if he's contacted the board. Basically, the discussion was with respect to the impacts of the road salts, and with this particular situation, he felt that since the houses would be serviced by municipal water supplies, predominantly groundwater flow appears to go towards Crest Brook Pond, and that the dilution of any road salts within the large Crest Brook Pond would basically prevent any impacts from any other downstream wells, so he wasn't concerned.
Thanks for the information.
We're meeting with the Board of Health on the twenty-seventh of March, I believe, that's their next available date, and I'm sure that will be discussed in more detail with the board. And then lastly, as had been mentioned by the town planner in the vicinity here of the Crest Brook Road Midway Street intersection, the applicant has secured an easement from that abutter. That easement has been executed, just to confirm that the abutter was happy with the proposed locations. That's been completed, the applicants had that done, I believe the board has a copy of that, as well as the easement plan for, for their review and files. But we went forward and had that completed so that we could then have the comfort level to remove the four trees that were proposed to be removed for the sidewalk construction from the requested list of street trees. So we're basically down to one street tree in this location here, and four street trees for the pathway connection through one area.
So we have connectivity through the main road and the back area?
That's correct, the sidewalk will come up through the development, through this area, down the existing Crest Brook, and down here, with two little bump outs that Richard mentioned earlier, around two areas where there's two, two mature trees that are going to remain now.
So the plans have all been submitted, they're all been updated?
Yes.
You checked them, Rich?
The only plan change that we've made since the last meeting was on one sheet to designate that lot.
Oh, yeah, no, I checked it, yeah.
Okay. I just.
I believe that's it, from the plan standpoint, Attorney Maitland, I believe, is all set with the town council, but.
Yes, I, you know, you had asked for us to have town council approve all the documents, sorry.
Right.
You had asked us to have town council give their premature to all the documents, they have done so, and I think we're submitted.
They sent that to us, Elizabeth, and.
For your review.
We all reviewed, yes, we're all set with that now.
Great.
And I think that, Mr. Kane, we, I had some conversation with our planner about the, the lot number before the affordable is done, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be, the house and the bond are not part of this equation, there'll be five market rate houses built, and then the sixth occupancy permit would be in the affordable, and that works for you?
That's correct.
Great.
I, I would like when the, that sixth lot was released, if I could have a couple others to be built at the same time.
Yeah, that's, there's no reason that that's stopping you at all.
Okay.
You could build the rest of it at that same time, that's not a problem.
Okay, I just didn't want to hinge on lot release versus, okay, but clearly the occupancy permit will be.
Your questions have actually spurred us to make a couple of changes to our scheduling, which is kind of confusing to read, that was developed years ago, so that helped everybody out for a step or two.
Very good, thank you.
On this whole plan, I know that United Consultants have done a great job appealing to all of our needs, and I know we did multiple renditions of this plan, wouldn't have been possible without Mr. Kane's approval, because he's paying the bills. So I think that finally, after all the, the renditions of this, I think we come up with something that works for everybody, hopefully you're happy with it, and again, it's nice to have a cooperative plan here, so we can all come to terms and get satisfied, same, including the abutters of this property also, so that's good. Before I wrap this up, does anybody have any questions on this? Is everybody, first of all, okay, let's close this public hearing, first of all, a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing on the definitive plan for Norway Farms.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, and as I had promised, Rob, that thanks to the hard work of our planner and our assistant, we have been forwarded draft decisions of everything, I know that I have read them, I, we made some modifications, minor administrative things, so I'm all set with the decision, is everybody else?
Yep.
Is anybody not allowed to vote on this decision based on, Michelle's recusing herself.
Michelle recused, Greg.
Has anybody missed too many meetings?
Nope, Greg made up the last meeting, he's gone.
I watched the last meeting on YouTube.
All right, so we're all eligible to, to vote. Everybody's.
On the train to work and on the train home to work, part one, part two.
Rick, we don't have a.
It was a quick one, it was a quick meeting.
Right. Norway Farms on the way in, Shire Drive on the way home.
Good job.
The special permit to this project was only the open space plan, it's already been done and approved.
That was just done previously, yeah.
So all we're going in is approval of the, certificate of approval for the subdivision. Right here. Can you folks are all set with that?
All set.
All right.
Ready to.
I'm ready.
You're ready, all right?
Yep, I'm ready.
I move to approve the certificate of approval for definitive plan for Norway Farms Up in Space Preservation Development.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So that includes us signing this Form C one covenant, we can probably do this after we wrap up at the end of our meeting, so as far as you folks go, you could pick this up in the office tomorrow.
Yeah, it'll be filed.
Start your appeal period, so. Should be all set.
That's great, thank you very much for all your help over the last year and a half.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Yep.
Thank you.
Seventy-seven Pond Street. We have a motion here for a limited site plan modification?
Yeah, this is a public hearing, so you get to read the notice of hearing into the record.
Kevin, do you want to read us the notice of hearing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass GL Section forty A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, Section F eleven, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, February twenty-first, twenty eighteen, at seven thirty P M in room one twenty-four at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, relative to a special permit for outdoor storage and limited site plan modification for property located at seventy-seven Pond Street Drive in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, LBJ Trailers LLC, is proposing modification of the site layout and addition of outdoor trailer storage areas for the proposed trailer sales operation, the property is located in the C one zoning district, reference assessors map nineteen, block seventy-two, lot twenty-seven. The plan application is available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
For the record, Nick Fassendole, Level Design Group, here on behalf of the applicant, LV Trailers. The Love Joys are seated over there, for any operational questions that may come up regarding the proposed change.
I'm going to get a small plan for the table.
Okay. I have a set here, too, if you need it.
Do you have an extra set, Nick?
Yeah.
Could you put one right over here for these?
I think we have, we have a couple there.
You got a couple?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're all set, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You, you guys can house here, which are the building that's already.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Correct, so, yeah, for the record, the property is located at seventy-seven Pond Street, it's currently, site's currently under construction under a existing permit dating back to two thousand nine, special permit and site plan permit, and the applicant is the prospective buyer of the property, and they would like to make some modifications to that approved site plan to be able to more efficiently run their trailer sales operation. So I'll quickly run through the layout changes detailed in the plans that you have in front of you. So because the site is kind of compact with narrow driveway, some one-way driveways around the property, they'd like to kind of open that up to allow their clients to be able to bring in their trailers easily. So what they'd like to do is eliminate these curbed islands right here, and make those striped islands, so the curb line would return in here, return in here, and those would be painted islands. They'd like to eliminate these two parking spaces, these are parallel spaces along a one-way driveway, so they'd like to eliminate those two parking spaces, push the curb line back two feet, and that would leave enough room to create a two-lane driveway, that's twenty-four feet wide. So this would go from a one-way to a two-way driveway, this driveway would remain a one-way drive. They'd like to remove this small island located right here to help circulation, they'd like to add a little bit of pavement and move the curb line up through this area, once again, to provide additional room for circulation. They'd like to also convert this rear area to an outdoor display area for the trailers. This was detailed to be hydro-seated, any part of the disturbed area, so it's going to be a gravel surface where they'll be parking trailers. There's a retaining wall located in this area right here, they'd like to extend that block retaining wall, as shown, to kind of have a nice level, no, more workable grade to park the trailers on, it's not going to be a level surface, it's about five percent or so. Let's see, what else do we have here? And all curbing on the site was approved as concrete curbing. They'd like to modify this section with this dashed line to cadot berm, so they can drive their trailers up to the storage area. Think that about addresses the layout changes. So the proposed building was originally dedicated as office and retail space, but they're going to be changing the use of the building, so half of the building will revert to, or be changed to warehouse space, and a portion of the sale space will be utilized as warehousing. So we've updated the site plan to show the breakdown for the required parking. The required parking went from, I believe it's twenty spaces to about fifteen spaces, so losing these two parking spaces is going to affect the required onsite parking, will be in excess of the required parking demand for the site. Did the next page on this? So as part of the site changes, we are going to be doing a little modific, a few modifications to the approved grading layout. As I said earlier, we're going to be extending this retaining wall around the back of the site, these dark colored lines are the new proposed grades. So the original grade in the back here was proposed to be two twelve, we're raising that up to two fifteen, same thing here, we're raising this grade from two fifteen to two sixteen, and we're coming up to be able to just have a nice, constant grade, not too steep of a pitch for the storage area. We did receive some comments from Board of Health Agent Wade Sossier. He had some concerns regarding the septic system with, for cover over the tank and the leaching field, which is already installed, so he sent me over the site, excuse me, the as-built plan, which was submitted a year and a half ago. After reviewing that plan, it was determined between Wade and myself that this proposed grading, which was approved, doesn't work, unfortunately. The site was originally going to have a high point of two seventeen located in this area with the tank. The grade over the tank was going to be about two sixteen and a half, based on Wade and I's calculations, the tank would be essentially sticking out of the parking lot at that point. So I had to regrade the parking lot, so I adjusted the slope, made this driveway about two and a half percent coming up through here, so moved the two seventeen contour this way, made a high point of two seventeen seventy-five, so we have at least nine inches over the tank, and we can get H twenty framing grates, because this is in a parking lot, it all has to be H twenty loading. And then I pulled the seventeen contour over this way to kind of level the site out, and I added some spot grades to help clarify things. So that, that addresses Wade's comment regarding the cover of the tank. And the cover of the septic system, I just added a spot grade in the back here, just to clarify that. And the cover of the septic system, I just added a spot grade in the back here just to clarify that, you know, the grade at this point can be no less than that to provide the required cover over the existing, I believe it's Caltech chambers which have been installed. All right.
Yeah.
The next one would be the landscape plan?
Nick, is the front elevation of the building going to change?
The, the view, the style of the building? I don't believe so, no. So, uh, by making all these layout modifications, unfortunately, we had to modify the landscape plan. So there were some small plantings, shrubs located in these two islands. We're looking to eliminate those. In this area, we had some bushes, small trees. Those would have to be eliminated because it's all going to be outdoor display area covered in gravel. We relocated, um, one of these plantings over to this side. And we had to relocate, there was a proposed tree in this area right here. But by relocating that curb, as we're doing, we had to eliminate that tree. There's just not enough room for a new tree here because there's a large 40-inch pine, less than 10 feet away. So it'd be too close to plant that additional tree. So in the back, uh, we still have a designated snow storage area in the rear. This was designated as snow storage on the approved plan. This existing snow storage area, which was approved, uh, on the original plan, that will remain. And I think that covers the landscape plan changes. Check my notes here. Oh, and we'll be adding a, uh, proposed wooden stockade fence around this portion of the site to kind of shield the, uh, outdoor storage area. I believe that covers all the changes. Any questions?
Yeah, uh, do you have a, a drawing that describes the construction of the wall? Shows the elevations and, uh, describes the height of the wall?
If you go back one sheet. Okay. So the, on this plan here, I have a top of wall grade. So the top of the wall is going to be 214, about four feet high at its highest point in this back section right here. This is like a ledge knoll, so it's like, kind of climbs up really quick right here. Nice pocket of ledge, so we're going to end the wall right before that. So this existing grade coming through here is 210 at its lowest point, and this is 211. So right here with 214, 214 and a half, 214 and a half down here. And we kind of maintain that 214 and a half, 215 grade to tie into this point right here, which is 215 on the existing wall.
Did the grade changes, Nick, change the, uh, drainage flowing into the catch basin?
With regards to the parking lot, there's no major modificate or changes to the drainage patterns. This was all, for the rear section here, this was all graded to flow from the back of the existing parking, or the proposed parking lot, to the rear property line. It's going to continue to do the same. It's just going to be a gravel cover. We don't anticipate any, uh, any issues with that type of gravel cover. There's a small increase. I think it's 4% in the overall site impervious cover. So very minor with the additional pavement in this area right here. And, you know, in this area right here where we're adding in these two small areas.
Does that still stay within the requirement of, of the board? Or no, we have a maximum?
Correct, yeah. If you kind of pan over towards this way. Nope, this way. And then, oh, sorry. Can you go to sheet one? Too high-tech for me. I'm usually used to a board. So if you go down a little bit, I did all the lot coverage calculations right here. So we were originally approved at 53, 37, and we're now at 56, 32. I believe it's 60% in this zone, so we're still under that line.
Counting your crushed stone as pervious?
Correct, yes. Which it is.
You don't think so?
It is. It just looks very hard.
And it's not, uh, going to be a compacted dense grade base like a, like a roadway. It's just going to be crushed down, laid out to provide good drainage in that area and a stable surface. I mean, they could park trailers on grass, but eventually it's going to turn to mud. So it's not a compacted gravel.
For the members to know, I did have a talk with the, uh, Board of Health Agent. And his comments that you've already addressed really aren't the purview of this filing for us. This is going back to the Board of Health, and they will make sure that all the grade changes to accommodate the field of the septic and the tank all work properly. And since the Board of Health always has the right over the stormwater on a site, they will review that also and make sure that everything conforms and works right. So that is all pushed off to the hands of the Board of Health when they go to get their, their approvals from the Board of Health. As far as we go, we're off the hook for that, so. But it sounds like you've done all this in advance anyway, so that's good.
How about the design review board? Does this get kicked back to them as a modification?
No, because they haven't changed the building. That's why I asked.
What about the wall?
The wall was in the first plan too, wasn't it?
Well, a section of the wall was.
Correct. It would just be continued, it's just a, a keystone-style concrete block wall. So we're just going to continue that same style of wall up and around the back.
But the concept of it is, is you don't see the retaining wall from the building site. You see the retaining wall from the neighboring sites, right?
Right, right.
Yep.
So there's no treatment of the wall, the wall's exposure to the neighbors?
It's a cut stone-faced wall?
Correct, yeah. If you go to-
Was on sheet two?
Sheet two.
Yeah.
There was a, I just kept the original approved- wall detail. Correct, yes. So it's the precast concrete with the keys and the, uh, stone facing.
And that wall was the original planned wall too, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're just extending it. Secondly, just so you guys know, the neighbor is a big two-door oversized mechanical storage garage, so.
That's correct.
And these folks here sort of have a time crunch where they're transacting on this property. So we wanted to move them along as quick as we could. So I think that our planner decided that site plan review, design review, was needed.
Um, on the, the ledge outcropping you pointed at the corner?
Correct.
Curious, is that landscaped at all, or is it, I'm not familiar with the site. Is it actual ledge? Is it stuff like-
It's, yeah, it's just, uh, existing ledge knoll. You can see the, how the high contours, it's not-
I just didn't know if-
Hasn't, wasn't put there for any reason. There's no aesthetic value. It just exists on the site, and they'd have to essentially blast that out or be hammered at it.
I didn't know if it had landscaping, if it needed some erosion control because of the severe grading of it was more the line of my question.
Correct, yeah.
And then I had, um, a question about the existing 40-foot pine and just where it sits in terms of visual sightlines for the drive on the-
Uh, the 40-inch pine? Uh, it's a more going, uh-
Yeah, it's on the left.
You can go to sheet three, it would show it on the landscape. But that tree's existing. It was on the existing approved plan, um, to remain. So I don't believe it was deemed to be a site disson hazard back in 2009. You can see, I mean, the spread really doesn't, this is the edge of the pavement. You can kind of see how the canopy falls. And that part of the canopy is above any typical car travel height, so it doesn't cause any site distance issues.
Sticking with the landscaping, the trees that are removed where we're creating access to the trailer parking, is there any opportunity to relocate them along the fence line?
It's pretty tight back here. I mean, essentially, this is going to be all gravel and then at the top of the wall, and then we'll be putting the fence in. So, I mean-
In front of the fence?
They could be planted there. I guess, look, we're getting rid of four, four trees, I believe.
You're using that for storage though, for display, right?
Correct, yes. So, I mean, we'd like to keep that as open as possible.
That would probably interfere with the display area over time if they grew bigger.
Correct. And typically, you don't look into planting trees like that right up against one of these block walls. Sometimes the roots may interfere with the, with the gravity wall.
You all set, Joe? Walter? No? Got them done? I'm all set. You all set, Eric? Aaron?
I'm having a hard time over the loss of the trees, but I'll get over it.
It is a commercial slash industrial area, so.
No reason to have trees.
Quite well noted. First, we, we have to take a vote to categorize this as a minor modification of a, of a site plan. So if everybody's in agreement, this is a minor modification, we'll take a, a motion for that.
Just a limited site plan review? It's minor, but technically in the bylaws says limited site plan review.
Limited.
Just redification.
So.
Were there, were there any compromises with the original site plan that we had made and granted that we're now losing on the-
It's carrying forward all the conditions from the 2009 site plan and the decision.
Okay.
That's correct, yep.
Uh, I move to vote this as a, can you say it again? Limited site plan?
Limited site plan approval.
Approval.
Minor modification.
John wants to call it a minor modification.
That's fine.
Well, I had a discussion with the building inspector, because in the, in the language of that, uh, limited site plan approval, there are judgment calls on what was considered limited now. So just to fully enforce that we agree-
Emphasis taken, yes.
With the judgment.
Yes. I agree.
The proposed changes to, um, seventy-seven Pond Street.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess it's better to be redundant than leave it out totally, right? So.
And then special comment?
Now, we have a, uh, a vote on approving of the special permit, 2018-01.
So just on the, um, 2009 decision, there was a typo on item number four on the first page. I don't know if it matters because I don't know if it was a typo back in 2009 or if it got transcribed incorrectly for this. Item number four, it's just a typo. It's something, it's minor, but, um, so it's a grammatical, extend the block will be retaining wall. I think it just wants to stay- extend the block retaining wall. And then our document says 148 feet, but the plan says 158 feet. So on plan, and I don't know if this matters since it's dated 2009, but, drawing C-1-0 says it's 158, not 148.
Is this plan to scale? So the plans would overrule the, the typo anyway. That should be 158?
Well, it says 148 in this, so I'm just saying there's a discrepancy.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It's just minor.
We can, um-
Do you see it?
So I guess.
Yeah.
Is it a scale there, Nick?
We can, we can add it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
158.
Whatever the correct one is.
It's more, I think more than 150 range, so. Fifty, 152 scaling, it could fall apart at 150.
So whether we, uh-
Either the drawing or the decision needs to be changed, that's all. I don't care what the right number is.
We put a plus or minus on it?
We'll do plus or minus 152. How's that?
And, and is it decision 2009-06, or is it, should it, so it was a site plan and a special permit?
And what are these two? Uh, we have a site plan decision.
2009-06.
Site plan modification, and then you've got a new, it's a new special permit.
Yeah.
So is this a kind of carbon copy of what was done in 2009, or?
So the, the decision is from, the original decision is from 2009, which you're modifying because of limited site plan review. The special permit that's requested, that's new, specific to this use here for having the display area in the, in the rear.
Okay, so we have two approvals needed.
Yeah.
So why do we have a motion for us for the site plan modification application?
I move to approve the site plan modification application, decision 2009-06 for 77 Pond Street.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we come to the special permit, huh?
Motion to approve the special permit, permit?
Yeah, sure. I move to approve the special permit application, decision number 2018-01 for 77 Pond Street.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, all set?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Good luck.
7:35, Fern Ridge?
You know what, John, we didn't close that hearing.
We didn't?
I thought we did.
Did we? No, we only voted, voted as a limited site plan.
Yeah, okay. Make, make the motion quick.
Actually, to close the hearing.
Make the motion quick.
I move to close the hearing for 77 Pond Street.
Second, yeah, third. All right.
Just procedural, I guess, huh?
Thank you.
Well, that's good.
Everyone's like, shut up, mate. It's so annoying.
Turn that mic off.
I know. It was turned off 10 minutes ago.
Right, so we have a, uh, open space special permit modification request from Bond, Fern Ridge Estates.
I think I forgot to give you the notice of hearing.
Your signs collapsed. You don't know who you are.
We'll give his notes.
Can we just make it up as I go? All right. Good? Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass GL Section 40A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, February 21st, 2018 at 7:35 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall relative to a modification of the open space preservation special permit for Fern Ridge Estates. The property is located off Turner Road and Winston Road in the R3 zoning district. Reference assessors map 16, block 34, lots 152 and 153. The applicant is Louis Petrosi of Wall Street Development Corporation of Westwood, Mass. The plan, application, and associated materials are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board Office during regular office hours.
You're on.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lou Petrosi from Wall Street Development Corp. Um, this request for a modification, um, was originally presented to the board back in October of 2017. And essentially, we're asking to modify the open space parcel by reducing it by approximately 1.2 acres. And, uh, the remaining parcels will constitute sufficient, um, open space as required under your open space, um, bylaw.
Do you have that, that change plan?
Do you want a hard co- Do you want a hard copy?
You have a hard copy?
Oh, hard copy, yes.
So the parcel being taken away from the current open space plan, is that C-1? Is this?
Uh, yes, C-1 is the parcel that's been taken.
This is taken away?
C, which, this was originally parcel C.
This whole thing here, C-1 and 2 is originally the open space land, correct?
One of the parcels, yes.
Correct. So we're taking out this parcel C-1?
That was purchased by the fellow who owns lot 9A.
I, we're contemplating that as part of this transaction.
What I had talked to, uh, Jack Hathaway today, what we have to check, and it hasn't come up. We're changing- come up, we're changing an open space plan for fees.
Well, you could say it that way, but.
Well, that's what we're doing.
Right.
So, we want to make sure that, first of all, that that's legal.
I, I don't think you should link the two, I think you.
Right, well, we have to, because we're not going to endorse the plan unless we get the open space money, so they're, they're, they're linked.
Right.
So, I think that he wanted to bring this through, just to make sure that we're not doing a quid pro quo that's not legal, let's make sure that we check this with town council.
Well, I wouldn't have structured it that way, it's strictly, uh, a modification that essentially is permitted by the bylaw because we have.
Correct.
Extra open space to do with.
I understand. What would have been easier, I think, and would have taken this off the hook, is if just the open space fees were paid outside of this by itself, and then we were just transacting on this by itself, that would take out the, the question of legality.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know, I, I would never real, contemplated that there be a legal, you have two parties that are willing to do.
I understand, but we're, we're gonna be making an amendment to an open space permit based on funding, so, we gotta check that out. But anyways, I don't think, if that was an issue, then.
Well, it was, let's say it was an issue.
Right.
So, and I came in here and I asked for a modification without having owed any fees.
Right.
The board's position would be one.
We don't know.
Wouldn't approve it.
You're asking for, you're asking for a hypothetical.
Oh.
So.
Which is what a good guy from law school would do, uh.
So, you're saying if you had already paid the fees, and, based on the original square footage?
We're, we're doing this primarily because.
Yeah, but we can't say, it was before us, you can't, you can't, uh, go on a, uh, what's the word I'm looking, you can't speculate. So, basically, this is the situation we have now, you understand it, right?
I understand.
So, we gotta check, we gotta check the legalese of this first, but we can continue on with this hearing.
Sure, well.
While that's checked. When did you anticipate paying the money?
Well, the way we had previously discussed it, um, when the plan was signed, the plan would be released to me and I would pay funds to the town.
Well, a little bit, little bit different, we discussed this, once we had the funds cleared, we would endorse it and give it to you.
Well, not, well, it doesn't, it's all semantics, but.
No, that's actually kind of a big point, because that's what the record shows, so that's important, so that we, you know that, anyways, anyways, so.
My funds would be questionable, but it's okay.
You understand.
But that's, but that's.
Yep.
The transaction that was going to take place.
I understand.
We'd change the funds for the plan.
Right.
And the modification.
I understand.
So, you know, this is, uh, going back to Oct- October of last year, so I thought we had this kind of high end out, presented the plan, it was endorsed, I would have brought a check, asked just who to make the check out to, we would have brought the check in, we would have got the plan, and I didn't realize we were having a public hearing to modify, I thought.
And we just, yeah, we just, I just realized a few weeks ago that, just called for a special, a, uh, open meeting.
Oh, I didn't.
Public hearing, right, yeah, I know, that's why we're here.
Thought it was a minor modification which was permitted, so, but anyways.
That's what they.
Whatever you want to do, it, when the plan's endorsed, and the vote, and the board takes its vote, then we'll exchange the money for the plan.
Sure, I think we would like the money first.
That's, I think the problem, is that, um, trying to cooperate with one another, um, I'm not gonna pay funds and then have the town not approve the plan.
You understand the funds we'd do years ago.
Well, could be.
All right, well, anyways, we, we, we've already.
Why we're going there, I thought we had this all resolved nights ago.
Right, yeah, but, we thought, I was told by Betsy that she was expecting the funds to come in a few months ago.
That, that plan was supposed to be endorsed when we presented it, I, this is going back two meetings ago.
Is to be endorsed after the funds were cleared.
Well, that's.
All right, well, you can pull up, you can pull up the tape in the minutes, I know what I said. Anyways, that being said, we have, uh, a request to change, are you, any neighbors here for this particular, would you folks like to come up and see what's asking to be done, and take a look at the plan that, well, it's up there also, if you can, Lou, could you just show them what land is going from open space to private ownership?
Uh, this parcel here, C one, is gonna be subdivided off and transferred to the owner of nine A, approximately one acre, one point two acres.
Is that, uh, would that be a buildable lot?
No.
Right, no, it wouldn't.
But it would no longer be open space?
That's correct.
So, access to the open space from, uh, from Chickatobit, is, is it walking trail and a path there that gets to the other open space areas, so that, looks like that space, that parcel would consume that.
Yeah, I think it'd be challenging to get there from Winston, too.
Well, there is no pathway.
Right.
From Chicka, from Chickatobit, you have land that the town owns that abuts this property.
Did you build the path when you had this open space, were you required to put in a path through there?
No.
So, this is an existing path from before.
Right.
As compared to a planning board approved path that was built by the developer, I think that's important to note, so right now, uh, in a lot of these open space plans, uh, we don't have formal trials just to save on the tree clearing, and we have folks just meander a path through wherever if they want to go there, so, uh.
But how would you even access it from Winston, right, don't you need to be able to access the open space?
You still have access to it from Winston, from the other parcel here.
But that's a drainage.
I know.
There's not really access.
Rick. Well, it's a drainage easement, but I'm assuming it's, it's.
It's accessible.
Roomed and seeded and grassed.
Sorry?
I'm, I'm assuming.
It, it is walkable.
It's walkable, yes, right.
Why don't you say, say it's walkable?
I, I've been there, it's not really walkable, it's a big drainage area, yeah, I think they're required.
So, does it, is it gravelly, is it muddy, like, what makes it not walkable?
No, it's extremely uneven and, uh, like a, a giant ditch.
It's a swale, you're talking about a swale?
Right, I don't really think that's somewhere that the public can really access the open space through.
Whoa.
So, it's a swale that's grassed. Is this a natural drainage swale?
It's a drainage, it's a drainage basin that was constructed there, if you notice on the plan, the dashed line is the area that constitutes the drainage easement.
Right, right.
We've left, uh, a ten-foot width of, uh, additional land outside of the easement for people to travel or to walk on.
But there's no piping in there?
No.
It's a natural.
There's a pipe that goes from the end of the cul-de-sac, uh, from one of the catch basins to a head wall.
Right, okay.
That's in the drainage easement.
All right, all right. Looking at this plan, whether it's two parcels or broken up, it looks like it's a very similar access to that open space.
We've done very little to alter the frontage that's, you know, those parcels have on Winston Road.
And all of, all of the, John, all of the property here is privately owned, right?
Correct.
Which? All along here.
Chickatobit.
Chickatobit, these are.
That's Chickatobit, yes.
Yeah, and they're all privately owned.
And everything down this way is owned by the town.
Town, yes, yeah.
Right, yeah. Questions, you guys?
Well, let's see, access to this open space is now available from Winston Road through the swale.
Sounds good for that.
Or the ten-foot path is, on side of the swale.
Yeah, yeah, and presumably, if you want to walk through the woods, you can get to it from the other direction as well.
Well.
Going off Chickatobit, because there's a, there's a, a, right away, owned by the town off Chickatobit into that larger parcel, and you can walk your way through the woods into this area, presumably.
Theoretically, there, this open space is connected to the town's open space, which runs behind all the homes that are on Winston Road.
Yeah.
To a section of open space that accesses, again, on Winston Road, so it's sort of, it's a, it's a meandering type of.
Yep.
Path that's pre-existing from before, from the development days.
Mm-hmm. Right, yeah. Any questions, Walter?
No?
So, bear, bear with me here, can I ask a question? Right, so, uh, you know, as I understand it, as the arrangement works, right, so the developer gets some, um, some variances, right, to do this development, and.
He gets an open space per, special permit.
Right, and requirement, he has to grant some open space to the town.
Right, yeah.
So, that was agreed upon eight years ago.
Right.
So, what I'm struggling with is that it's eight years after the fact, and we're making a change like that, and to me, as a resident, that's concerning.
Right, it's a good question.
That we would make a change, right, and.
The only reason, what was your name for the record, sir?
John Gavin, I'm at twenty-one, Chickatobit.
All right, John, the only reason we're considering this, when we have an open space subdivision, he's required an X amount of square feet put into the open space for a town. This particular open space that was put in years ago had excess open space.
Understood.
Over our formula, so as he takes out this extra parcel, the remaining open space parcel is still within the guidelines of what's required for an open space plan.
Understood, but, so, for me, as a resident, and I'd be concerned for other residents, that we establish the plans upfront, and then they change when the development's completed, not early on, when it's completed.
I understand.
Right, and so, for me, personally, when I bought my house three years ago, I asked, I looked at the plans, and I asked, what is this land? It's open space, it's never gonna be built on, it's open space forever, that's what the town hall told me, that's what the plan said, so I acted on that, bought a house, right? So, my concern is, after the fact, you'd say quid, quid pro quo, and yeah, it is concerning, they're making an arrangement after they've completed the development.
Are you a twenty-one Winston street?
Twenty-one Chickatobit.
So, you're not in the subdivision, you're not in the subdivision?
No, he backs up, his lot backs up to it, for a second.
That presents just a slightly different picture, because your transaction buying yours wasn't with the developer's.
Nothing to do.
Part of the subdivision, that's why I was asking.
Right, but I based my transaction on the knowledge that, that's open space clearly on the plan, and to alter it when the easements that were put in place, or the variances that were put in place, haven't changed, those are still there, that happened, we can't change that, why are we gonna change the open space agreement from the original agreement?
Does it, does it, um, alter your, your opinion or your concern that it's not a buildable lot, it can't be built?
No, because I don't know what exactly that means, and I don't know that we can guarantee forever that some kind of structure isn't put on there.
Right.
Maybe outside of this room, right?
Well, it's got no frontage on the lot, so it's not.
Right.
It's got zero.
So, they couldn't put a house there, but I don't know what could happen to it, and I knew when I bought the house, it was open space on those plans that were agreed upon, and I knew that it was going to look the way it does right now, and I can't say that that will happen in one year, five, ten, twenty years from now.
Are you from the, uh, the budding subdivisions, or?
I'm, uh, Chickatobit as well.
Chickatobit also, anybody else here have any questions from this neighborhood? Guys, questions, comments?
Do you have access to that area from your property?
Yeah, my fence opens right up to it, so I go down that path right through it, and it's, it's a nice area, you know, it's great, you know, the kids love going out there, there's people walking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing all the time throughout the trails.
And the trail goes, sometimes it's people on horses, the trail goes from that side of Chickatobit all the way down to Winston, the backyard of Winston.
Yeah, all the way to Cleveland and Jane and Paul's farm, like, all the way out there.
So, so my question would be, in order to access the open space, whether it's the existing or the, or the proposed reduced open space from Chickatobit, you have to go through private property, is that true?
Yes.
Right, from, from our own private property.
Right, meaning that if you chose not to let anyone go through there, except your family or your friends or whoever, you could do that, right, because it's not an open space path.
I could, correct.
Okay.
Donna Jones, North Street, just as an observer of the community preservation meetings, this large area, Weaver property that is, um, owned by the town, um, when the transaction was finalized, it was then pointed out that we have no access to it from a public road. There were, when it was first presented from the owner to the town, it said you have this little strip off Chickatobit that you could, the public could use to get at the property.
Yep.
And then when they sealed the deal, and then the owner said, no, the town doesn't own that little strip.
Yep, yep.
So, I came as an observer to this meeting to see what was gonna happen on Winston Road, to see if Winston Road open space was the public's access to get to Weaver property.
Yeah, see, the remaining parcel for open space, that is what's in our guidelines for the amount of square footage, still has approximately forty or fifty feet access from the cul-de-sac on Winston Road, so there's still full access into this subdivision open space, and accordingly, off to the Weaver property.
So, what lot number is that? Part of C two?
The remaining open space, if, if we approved this modification, C two would be the remaining open space that would be access from Winston Road cul-de-sac.
Gentlemen, may I also add that, you know, just regarding the open space concept and the approval, there is access from Turner Street through an open space parcel to Winston Road, then there's an open space parcel that starts on Winston Road next to, um, eight Winston Road, I believe, and runs through a path to the Weaver property to out to Chickatobit or wherever that ends up going.
Yep.
This, uh, access point on the cul-de-sac is not meant theoretically to be the main driving point where people are gonna park at the end of the cul-de-sac and walk through the open space, it's a private, I mean, it's, people live there, they're not looking for the general public to park their vehicles and go there, they have families, they have kids, they all want to play out the cul, it's not meant to be a parking lot for people to, uh, park their cars and have access. If people want to walk down Winston Road, certainly they can do that, once it's a public way.
Right, okay. Guys, all set with questions?
I just want a comment.
Prior, prior to the development, there was an informal access, uh, path between my lot at twenty-three Chickatobit and twenty-five Chickatobit, the owners of twenty-five allowed people to use that.
Right here.
And that's how people access there, too, and cars parked on Chickatobit.
Yep.
Not all the time, but, you know, that's how they access those, that walking path.
May I ask her a question?
Sure.
You, you, yeah. You mentioned that, that the access off Chickatobit was not part of the Weaver deal?
Correct.
No kidding, um, so, who owns, who owns that little slice of, of, of land on Chickatobit that would lead to the Weaver property, town or?
The, no, that's why we can't get at it.
But who owns it?
The original owner.
The original owners, okay, okay.
Originally, if you want to go back in history, that section of the Weaver property was supposed to be dedicated for affordable housing, the town never pursued it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they didn't want to take that strip of land, they could take by eminent domain and give them the previous owner, whatever compensation they want, but, so it's, the town is, it's up to the town on how they want to handle that.
Sorry, I just, I want to sort of summarize, there is no public access to this land from Chickatobit now.
Correct.
Right.
So.
That's what I understand.
Substantially speaking, the proposal here doesn't change public access to the open space plan.
Correct.
But there are some citizen concerns with access from private land to open space land. Does that sound right?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, anybody have any suggestions, or would you like me to make some? Please.
I have a question, what, what are we doing to answer the question of the legality question that you raised at the beginning?
We're gonna send this to town council? What would help is if you paid the open space fees in advance, so that was off the table.
Then we can just.
If we, if we get the open space fee money in advance of any vote or any signing, it does, don't forget one thing, rehears a convenience to you, rehears a convenience to you. All right, so here's how I want to leave it, unless anybody has a different suggestion, I'm gonna continue this public hearing until May twenty-eighth.
March twenty.
March twenty-eighth, hopefully, the funding for the open space fees that have been due in the amount of how much?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand?
Six thousand.
How many lots, fourteen? How many lots, fourteen? Two thousand per lot? If they, if they are, if they are in the town's possession, then the way I see it, we can close this hearing and vote unencumbered by anything in pay. Because you're basically paying the fees that are due.
Just contrary to what was previously voted on.
No, it wasn't. We'll, we'll agree to disagree, all right? But I did mention, and a couple of times, the money before the check and I did mention the money to be certified funds. But that being said, that being said, we're here months later, we're just regressing. So basically, let's just get this done by the next meeting. It's in your foot and I won't check.
I'm not paying the money unless the plan is signed and the modification.
All right, then the board will make a vote at our next meeting when I close the public hearing. Very good, okay. We're all set. Motion to continue this public hearing until March twenty-eighth at seven thirty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're all set? We have a draft MAPC Town Light Economic Development Strategy.
You gonna take up my bond reduction or what?
The bond reduction is on for next meeting when Bob McGee checks the road.
I don't understand what needs to be checked with the road.
Bob McGee has a letter to us saying he has to check the construction of the road, the plantings and the trees.
This is, you know, I think you're being a little.
Do you have a copy?
I don't, I don't understand.
Do you have a copy of the letter from the public report?
I have a copy of the letter. He doesn't say anything about what's not reducing the bond.
He told me, he told me personally.
He told you personally?
Personally.
I see.
Absolutely.
So, so the fact that the board voted at, back in July, that they would release the money when the pavement was done and the trees were planted.
We did not vote that. Here's what we said, let me again refresh your memory. We said at that time, here's what I said. Before you pave, give us the complete ASB because we wanna make sure the road is in the right location, the right elevation, before you pave to cause any future problem.
And you got that.
We do not have the final ASB.
The final ASB isn't done until after the pavement is done. You cannot have it before the pavement is done.
Well, you can, if you're putting in two inches of pavement, you can. But anyways, that's neither here nor there. Right now the pavement's done, can we just get the ASB so we're all set? And Bob McGee's gonna check it and it's gonna be done in March and then we should be able to wrap that up.
I don't understand why the rest of the work that's on the bond reduction request can't be approved. What about all this stuff that we did that's not related to the pavement?
What, like the trees that were put in and haven't been checked yet and the grass that hasn't been put in yet? Anything else, Rich, missing?
We have drainage, raising the structures, cleaning the basin, flushing the system, cleanouts, curb stops, lumen seed, we only requested for the lumen. Tree planting contingency comes to eighty-nine thousand dollars, all of the requests. So if you're talking about checking the pavement, that's only forty-three thousand five hundred.
Anybody, I'll open up to the board. Anybody have any, a motion to release any of the funding for, for in Ridge? If you do, please make it and give me an amount.
I don't have the letter in front of me here, so.
Do you have the bond numbers, Betsy? We'll take it from Betsy, we'll take it from Betsy.
Yeah, that's all right. Sorry, that's yours. This is mine, okay. Let's see. This is the forty-three here.
What's the status of all the, the evergreens in the detention basin?
Separate line item in the bond.
Were they put in?
No, I haven't requested for those to be released. A separate line item.
Oh, it is? Do you have the paperwork, Betsy? The bond, the bond figures?
Should be attached to that, but hold on.
Right here, we just got tree planting.
That's for those street trees.
Yeah, eighteen acres.
Do you try, how it's attached to that?
No, we don't keep that.
There's a line, there's.
The last one here?
Right. So the trees, the evergreens are a separate line item.
Is it, is it called shrubs?
Right.
Must be. Must be, because it really is the only other one on here.
Right.
Right.
I'm kinda curious, well, what are we thinking about that's wrong with the pavement? That needs to be inspected?
We don't know.
You left to talk with Bob, which you should have called him before you talked to the planner, it's his jurisdiction.
And procedurally, normally we.
Procedurally, the DPW gives us the release in writing.
Right, well.
Right.
You make your request and then Bob checks it, gives us advice.
What's there to check though? He was there, he had people there.
To make sure that what you're claiming is complete is actually complete.
To his specifications, correct, yeah.
The specifications are the regulations, the rules and regulations of the planning board, not the DPW.
You all set?
Not really.
All right, then just raise your hand to be noted, but we just have a conversation back and forth, all right? Does anybody have any of the bond release data? Want to release any funding on this bond right now?
This kinda feels a little last minute, thrown together in the back of the napkin. I don't know, I mean, I feel like we would've wanted to review this stuff ahead of time and.
This was submitted back in December.
Hold on, hold on. Does anybody wanna make a motion to release any of the bond fund? I don't wanna be the one saying no.
Michelle?
No, I'm not comfortable without Bob's review. Typically, our procedure is we get the request and Bob confirms the status and.
I have that.
Yeah, sure.
I don't wanna waste the board's time, because it's obvious that, it's obvious that you people wanna do business a certain way. And I'm not interested in it.
All right, so you motion to continue this public hearing until May twenty-eighth?
We did it.
You did it already?
Did it, did it.
We're all set, okay.
Now it's May twenty-eighth or?
No, it's March twenty-eighth. It's March twenty-eighth. Could be May if you want it to be.
Slip of the tongue.
Doesn't really matter at this point. There's open space if you want it.
So with our, with open space monies due, they're coming from somewhere. Apparently not him.
All right, so what's?
So anyways, Rich, you've got something on the draft MAPC Economic Development Strategy?
Prior to my arrival, I know, I think some of the board members participated in the Economic Development Strategy was done through MAPC. I believe a few of you have, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So they, they produced the draft to the town and so I, I did get a couple of comments that, and I gotta, I'll share. Was it just me? Did you send everybody?
I don't remember.
All right, well, if I have it, I'll, I'll share it with the board.
Sure.
Is there any other thoughts, comments that the board wanted to? At least at this point, what we, what I would suggest for a process is we would, you know, we'd post this, you know, get this out for public consumption as far as in the draft. And we could then have the representative Josh, Ike, I think it's Ike, if I get my memory correct, said that we could, he could come out and do a follow-up presentation. It could be to the planning board, it could be a joint meeting, whatever, you know, as far as a, a wrap-up to this. So this is just the draft. So if you wanted to, I could suggest we have, if you like, have a comment period. We could put it out there. People can comment in to the board.
Input's always good.
You know, and we could do, since we have a meeting at the end of March, maybe have people have comment essentially maybe a month from now. And then the board would have those in advance. And then it's kind of on our timeline more or less. It doesn't, you know, necessarily need to, and we could then have Josh maybe come in and do a follow-up presentation, maybe April timeframe. You know?
Okay. Good idea.
Be reasonable.
Yep, good idea.
There are some things I would like to take a look at as far as the B one zoning-wise. Potential changes, so.
Is that for this next town meeting?
I would.
Spring?
Hope, hope to do that, yeah, yeah.
Just let us know.
But.
Yeah.
I gotta, I gotta work around the procedural issue or, or challenge, so to speak.
They leave an opening on the, on the warrant for spacing if they know something's coming.
Right, that's a possibility. Also did discuss the possibility of, maybe not next, customarily, but have a special at the same time, the same night as the annual, which they could open a warrant, we could put some language on there.
Really?
And so we, give us a little more flexibility as far as timing goes. Not a lot, but, but better than Monday. So that's a possible option as well. I discussed it with Jack and, but that hasn't been voted on by the board's selection, yeah.
Is the B one stuff we've tried to change before? I know you, you may not know, but maybe someone at town hall might have told you.
I don't know. It's possible.
I, I ask that only because if it is and it's something the town voted down and then we're trying these special maneuvers to have a special warrant on the same night, it might lose some trust with people.
Yeah.
Right? That we're trying to sort of like sneak around the system to try and pass something we've tried before. But I don't know, it could be something completely different, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I think the, probably the prudent path would be to kinda go down and we can kind of alter it too. So I mean, if it's, you know, again, it's, the idea is to try to move it along, get it right. And if it's not right, then we can just course accordingly, yeah. If there's, I'll look in, I'll have to do some homework to see what was maybe proposed years ago. Like, is it more recent or is it?
Yeah, I'm thinking more recent, some more recent things that we've had.
Yeah, the last few years.
Yeah.
But also zoning articles typically are pointed at the fall town meeting, typically. Doesn't mean they can't be put on the.
I think they're making a change. Well, then again, we had the big turnout at the last fall town meeting. They like to have as many people available.
Yeah.
When you wanna make a change to zoning to vote, you know?
You make a change to zoning, you'll get people there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always, and I, the zoning is always a challenge, like do you.
Especially in the B one.
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning somehow. We're not, we're proposing a study to change the zoning, not necessarily changing the zoning, right?
There's a, the study was done for the town, for the Town Light Economic Development Strategy. And there's, within that report, there's some ju, suggestions to look at the zoning, to make changes.
Right.
So we're not, not proposing another study.
Is this part of the, the TAP documents I have in front of me?
Correct. So there's, there's two parts. This is a, the TAP was for the technical assistance.
Right.
To look at the zoning. Right, that, I've applied to MAPC for that, which is based off of this document.
But we, we wanna get through that process before we actually propose the zoning change?
Part of the process is the zoning change, so it's, it's analysis, study and presentation of zoning.
I'm missing something.
Okay.
Reading through this document, it makes it sound like we wanna study what the appropriate changes would be.
Yeah, maybe it's, that, that's part of the process.
But that makes sense. What doesn't make sense to me is, is that we wanna get on the town warrant to change the zoning before we figure out how we wanna change it.
I think the study has yielded the change that is desired.
That's not what this document says.
That may be, but that's, that's the fact.
You talked about the housing plan?
Yeah.
We talked about the housing plan, which is a different document, right?
You're talking about the technical assistance application?
Am I mixing subjects? Yes, I am talking about.
Am I missing, mixing subjects too?
You are. You definitely are. I know about you.
Man, I don't know, there's so many, so many plans, I've lost track.
The housing, that's aside, that was, that was done in the fall. So the technical, correct. So when you, the zoning change study is both. It's study and analysis and figuring out, does that change make sense or not? And then you present it to town meeting. So for example, let's say we decide to reduce the setback.
I get that.
Right?
I fully get that.
All right.
But what I don't understand is this assistance document requests exactly what the zoning change is going to be. Right? How are we gonna decide what we're proposing to change? It's asking for help to figure that out, right? And, and part of it is how we're gonna write the language for the warrant, if I'm reading it correctly.
Yeah.
So how, so how can we actually write the language, put it on the warrant and vote on it before we've gone through the process of writing the warrant?
Within, maybe a, within the scope of that, technical assistance is the whole thing. We're gonna look at it, granted, this might be a robust schedule, we may not get it done and I, you know, bear that in mind, but that's part of the study.
So the consultant he's talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking about MAPC.
Is gonna help us draft the language that came out of the study, gave some recommendations. And that consultant will help us draft the specific language for the proposed zoning change. And then we would go to town meeting to see if we could implement it.
So what you're saying is, is you wanna put the item in the warrant, so it gets in there, so that we can, then as a side note, we're gonna hire a consultant to write the language, to get it set before we get to town meeting?
The, I'd like to get to town meeting in, in May, okay? And it may be too aggressive to do that, but they would be doing simultaneously studying as we're analyzing the zoning changes, to see what comes out in the wash. Is that?
Yes, I think I got you.
What, let me catch up question to Kevin's point that I'm off base here. What zoning changes are being considered that are different than the ones proposed through the Housing Production Plan?
This is.
Housing Production Plan also recommended changes within B one from higher density.
Yeah.
And recommended that we go to town.
It's the same thing coming at it from.
This isn't just housing.
No, this isn't, yeah, this is not strictly housing, this is commercial.
These could be changes in B one that are outside of residential.
Right.
They can't be one change you're talking about.
This document talks about.
That's what I was saying.
This technical assistance document talks about how to promote economic development in the downtown B one district.
Yeah.
So I think to Walter's point though, would the, would a potential outcome be zoning changes that are gonna both reflect outcomes of that as well as outcomes we already know of in the housing production plan?
It's possible that, you know, the recommendations in the Housing Production Plan will meld into this whole process. So there'd be a.
Certainly should be considered by the consultant.
Yeah. No, they're, they're, they're aware and they will, the Housing Production Plan, that work that's been done. So that'll be incorporated. But for, for example, just, we haven't dug into this necessarily. But percent coverage, you know, we have a certain percent coverage that we require in the downtown.
Maximum.
Maximum. Percent coverage. That might be challenging to me based on all the other requirements when you're trying to build out of sight, which may result in, you know, what the town wants to see for development in downtown may not be feasible when you layer all these different requirements together. So that's one thing to take a look at, is apply some development scenarios and then apply the bylaw to them to see if you get the outcome that you want.
I can draw an analogy with that, if you, those of us who were around a few years ago. When we looked at the C one district, the, it had a requirement for frontage roads. And those frontage roads were eating up so much of the property on various pieces, right, that bordered one fifteen or, or one A, that the, the, there wasn't enough left to develop anything. So we had to rethink that and eliminate the requirement for frontage roads, which allowed the property owners to more fully develop their property commercially.
Yeah, that's more of the.
I guess, I guess the reason I'm trying to figure out all this timing is town meetings go a certain way. And I think if we wanna promote changes to the way things have been done traditionally, we might wanna consider more town involvement before we get to the town meetings. Right? So whether there's subcommittees or educational sessions on the proposals that are coming into the meetings, right? I, I don't know, I'm just talking out loud here. But it, but to me, this seems like if we're, we're hoping to make a decision to get on the warrant by Monday so that we can get something done to get on the warrant in May, I, I just.
Well, no, we're not doing anything by Monday, so that's.
I just don't see a high level of, I don't see that as a. I just don't see a high level of, I don't see that as a high success rate option.
So take, take Monday off the table, that's not, you know, there, there is no, you have nothing, there is nothing to, to give you for Monday. But, um, the second, if it's, um, if it could line up that we could do something as a special, like I said, at the same time with town meeting, then maybe we do that.
But to that point, so like, May is still, or March is three months away, right? How much time do you think the community, you know, you have too much time, right, and you, things can lag, or the, you know, people forget, or whatever? However, obviously, not enough time, and it feels rushed, or, you know, not thorough. So the question is, you know, would three months be enough to kinda get the consultant in, builds the consensus, or at least educational component you're talking about, or, you know, what is the right amount of time, and maybe that's something that we think about is...
Yeah, I mean, it might take three months for us to agree on what the right changes are.
I think we're gonna find out a lot over the course of the next month, as soon as, as Rich said, we put this out to the public and let them review it and get some feedback from them, leading into our next meeting, I think we'll be able to get a better look at how it's gonna look looking forward.
I think what's gonna be interesting is how the consultant, what some of the suggestions are relative specifically to the housing plan, that's once you start adding these layers and filters, how it all shakes out, if it's, if it's all kind of consistent and pointing towards the right direction, it's a really compelling story to tell the town. If it's complicated and then just continues to kind of layer things, then maybe we need more time to kinda digest all of that, so I agree, I think, through some of this early work.
And I think there, there could very well be a possibility where there's a piece of it that's, that's ready to go, that, you know, you may not, you know... I agree, I mean, I'm not...
I think, don't get me wrong, I think it's all going in the right direction.
Yeah.
I just think we might wanna be strategic about how we propose it.
All right, let's go on a, a more limited subject now. Much confusing. The Board of Health would like the planning board's input on their proposed regulation, and the proposed regulation calls for banning the sale of cigarettes, right, right here, in the town of Norfolk.
Rick?
Not just cigarettes, but tobacco, right?
No, Justin Farmers, Justin Walgreens.
Well, that was, didn't finish, but thank you. Only, only in drugstores, and what complicates the matter is we only have one drugstore, which is Walgreens, which means that, our comments from some of the selectmen talk about, like, we have spot zoning, you can't just rezone one spot a certain way. This would discriminate against actually our anchor store in the, in the B one district, and the, and the Board of Health, rightfully so, is trying to create and, and contribute to the public health, where the questions arise is that if somebody's at Walgreens and can't buy cigarettes, they can go across the street to Linder's, they can go across the other street to Norfolk Market, or wherever. So I guess they wanna know, uh, what our feelings are on that, so, and then when we decide whether we're far against, strongly against, strongly far, wherever, we can have Betsy draft up a letter with Rich and send it off to the Board of Health. So proposed right now for banning all tobacco sales, Rick, in drugstores in the town, which basically is Walgreens. So you know CVS has a national corporate policy, they do not sell cigarettes in CVS. Walgreens does not have that policy currently, they sort of do it each on their own, I'm sure there's some Walgreens that don't sell them, Rick, but they don't have a company policy, so the Board of Health is gonna be bringing this up, and the financial question is, I don't know how many cigarettes sell at Walgreens, but I'm assuming they sell a fair amount, which could be...
Isn't this the kind of thing that we, we want somebody to present their opinion to us on?
I think Betsy and them are calling the Walgreens people.
But shouldn't the Board of Health be here saying why they're proposing this, promoting it as a...
No, they're welcoming us there to their meeting.
Oh, they're welcoming us.
But in case we can't make it, they would like, uh, an opinion from the planning board and the selectmen's office, whether we would be in favor of something like this or not.
Can we invite them to our meeting to make a presentation?
You can get into that.
And so the cycle continues.
We're the ones making it, isn't it?
No, Board of Health is, no, Board of Health is making this decision.
No, they are.
Board of Health regulation.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And they've already...
The way I read it, they, the proposal came from the Board of Health.
No, 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 no.
No, this is a proposal to the Board of Health.
It's gonna be their regulation.
It is, it is their proposed regulation change.
Can they vote that on their own, do they have to go to town meeting?
No, no.
No. It's a regulation.
Regulation, you need to post it in the paper thirty days before, and then you have a meeting, and you vote right then, and majority gets it.
My hearing is March twenty seventh.
It's gonna be through a bylaw, which goes through a, uh, town meeting vote.
But the vote's at town meeting.
Oh, she does vote.
No, 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 it's their, it's their board, no, town meeting, it's a regulation, it's their...
If they vote to ban tobaccos, Rick, it's done. Have you talked, talked to anybody from Walgreens, yes, Betsy?
I haven't, I sent them, I sent a, I sent them a letter.
All right, so just quickly around the table, thoughts up against...
The way that it's worded in the proposal from them is to be able to remove tobacco sales from an institution that promotes health and wellness, right? That's the way that they worded it?
Yeah, a drugstore.
Yeah, I, I don't think that you're able to pinpoint one type of business and another, I think that you were having a conversation about banning all tobacco and all outlets, different conversation, for this purpose, I'm strongly against it.
And you're not the first one to, uh, mention that too, and of course, the next question is, is Walgreens a drugstore? They sell frozen food, they sell cards, they sell gifts, so that becomes another question, if they ever get into a discrimination type thing.
That, that might not be the only establishment through the future of time that is, that is designated as a wellness establishment that wants to sell cigarettes either, so...
Anyway, they would be the only one that would be affected, your thoughts, Walter?
I'm, I'm in the same position that Kevin is, uh...
Too strongly against.
It's all, it's all or nothing, and, and so I'm against the way this is worded.
I'm in the same boat as these folks, strongly against?
Strongly against.
Strongly against?
Against.
Strongly or reg...
Very strongly against.
Very, oh, in one very, we had four strong words.
Can we go back and do it again now, I mean?
You go from strong to very.
Everybody's going up with a different word, that's funny.
Eric?
Don't like anything about it.
So I would guess, I would guess it's unanimous, the planning board strongly is against that proposed regulation, so if you could just draft it up, have Rich sign it, send it off to your meeting, we'll be all set.
When the reaction occurs, I can blame Rick.
I'm gonna put it on bold, on behalf of...
She's like a dual agent, she's the dual agent. Anybody have anything else that wanna bring up before we close out?
Uh, yes, is there a set of minutes? Yeah.
All right, Kevin?
And the annual report, don't we have to talk about the annual report too?
Oh, yeah, we deferred on that.
We only did.
Did we did, we already did that?
No, we didn't talk about that, we passed on it.
We didn't talk about it, it was...
We haven't.
Yeah, we, you fifty-two.
We did? Jeez, I guess we must have been out of the room.
All right, minutes first?
Yeah.
Nope, minutes next. Do we need Greg to do minutes?
Uh, he wasn't here, was he?
No, he wasn't.
Fair point.
Yeah.
All right, so we did have a chance to review, so I moved to accept the minutes from January twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The annual report is just stats for the planning board for the last year, that's all.
That's, at the end there where it says further info can be found at the website, um, does that have a link to, uh, to videotapes of these meetings? Does it have a link to the minutes?
Uh, minutes are on the website.
Minutes are on the website.
I would think so, yeah.
On the town website, or on the...
Oh, excuse me.
Planning board website.
The meeting website, because there's two separate sites, right?
They're on the town website, they're not always, like...
Well, Norfolk, this is the town website here, right?
Right. They're on, I, um, they're on the town calendar, that's, um...
It's on virtual Norfolk, if you go into the conservation or planning board and click on, you can get the wall list.
Well, that's actually Norfolk dot MA dot US.
That's what I was...
Virtual Norfolk is defunct.
This, uh...
Well, my point, my point was...
Link it?
Can, can they be linked, that's, that was my point, yeah.
I don't see why not.
Yeah.
It's all, all right.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Might as well, I mean, that's the purpose, the whole thing, get information out.
Right, yeah, okay, so, yeah, we can, you can have it back then.
Second?
You know someone's gonna make it?
Why don't you do a jern?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Donna, could you tell that young lady we're all set, thank you.